Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dick Montez, county supervisor. I've been given the opportunity to introduce our congressman. And may everyone turn off their phones, please. To begin with, I believe everybody in this room is familiar with all the activities that have gone on in Washington DC for the last couple of weeks. Which many accusations have been made? Many fear-mongering statements, "You're gonna lose your social security, you're gonna lose your Medicare," and numerous things. Well, Congress finally, in the senate and all, finally came to a conclusion. And I doubt if there's anyone in this room who knows what that conclusion means. And it is a pleasure to have a congressman who knows that it is his burden of responsibility to contact his constituents to explain what went on. I have found that comments through the media are interesting, but I believe the comments made by the congressman who represented us in this cabal, if there's a better word, I'll use it, will one step forward and is here today to explain to you and to answer questions. And it's a privilege to have someone who recognizes that fact. To meet our congressman face-to-face, who is willing to stand before us and explain from his perspective, and realizing that not everyone in this room will agree, I think we're very fortunate to have Jeff Denham, our congressman, represent us. Jeff?
Well, let me first start by saying thank you to Senator Supervisor Montez. Thank you for the introduction. Thank you for the job that you're doing. I know you're facing tough battles here in the county as well, and just appreciate you being here to introduce me tonight. And thank you to all of you. I know that this is a critical time in our history. Some very tough decisions being made in our nation's capital. I felt that it was important to, you know, some people feel like we have cut way too much, others feel like we haven't even scratched the surface yet. But I know that there are a lot of questions, and so I wanted to spend some time tonight addressing every question. I'm planning on being here as long as you'll have me. Let's go to questions.
Folks, I know you folks came in. If you guys want to come over, there's plenty of seats over here. By the way, my name is Jason Lyer. I'm Mr. Denham's chief of staff. So I will come around for you folks who raise your hands and let you ask a question.
Let's go to this gentleman over here first. He almost jumped out of his seat.
You had mentioned the amendment as far as the spending is concerned, the budget amendment. And I was wondering if you really believe that that has an opportunity to be passed since it is required a two-thirds vote in the house and the senate, and a three-quarter approval by the states? I really, as far as I can see, that is almost an impossibility with this congress and what's going on with Washington DC at this present time.
Oh, I don't believe it's gonna be easy. I think it's gonna be very difficult. It's the first time that this is going to come up for a vote, a vote in both houses. But it's something that 50 Democrats have already signed on to, it's something that already has bipartisan support. So we want to have a vote. We want to have an up or down vote. And it will be an election-year issue. If it goes all the way to the 2012 ballot, it will be an election-year issue, and the members that are voting yes or no will be held accountable. But 86% of the public is with us before we've even went out and campaigned on it. I think as more people understand that is government living within its means, I mean, it's a very simple bill that will change the constitution to say we can't spend more than we bring in. I mean, that cuts across party lines. So I do think that it has a chance, but more than having a chance, I just believe it's what we have to do. We can't go on continuing to borrow money, 16 trillion. You know, we've never been leveraged by other countries like we are with China today. We've got to not only eliminate our debt, but we've got to make sure that it balances every year.
What are you going to do to immediately turn on the water for these farmers? Because they've been battling this issue for over a year. Secondly, what are your comments about revenue income, perhaps coming from a five-year sales increase tax? Because people don't have income to tax anymore. Middle class doesn't have income. My husband and I pay thousands of dollars a year for health insurance, and I don't mind. But my mother pays nothing. So there should be some equity in that. And I'm not making one or the other. Obviously, we have family members who have earned the right to free health insurance, but there's no equity. But my main concern is your intervention to improve production in California jobs. And I'll tell you right now, it's not building houses, it's not building roads. We just had a crisis in Santa Salsa County with SCAP, and we see what happened by building houses and building roads. And the stimulus money obviously got wasted. Thank you for your comments about increasing water, increasing oil production, and perhaps raising the sales tax for a minimum amount of time.
First of all, who's in charge of the sound system here? The number-one issue in creating jobs in the Central Valley is water. We've got to get water moving again. You know, I've been to the cities and the towns that have 40, 45% unemployment. I mean, we're, you know, facing huge unemployment rates as a nation. We're facing double that as a state, or here in our region. And the water crisis has created a much bigger problem in many of our valley towns. I believe that one of the biggest things that we can do nationwide is address our natural resources. Now, my friends in Louisiana, it's getting the permits moving and getting the oil production moving again. That's their issue, similar to what ours is here with water. Same in North Dakota, Alaska, the areas that have huge natural gas and oil shale. But we need to be energy-independent. Our agriculture needs to be independent, not dependent on waters, our natural resources. You know, if you go up to the mountains, we need to be following our temper harvesting plan so that the forests just don't burn up and put people at risk. So our natural resources, I believe, is the best opportunity, not only to address the energy crisis, or the crisis we have with our number-one industry here in California, agriculture, but putting people back to work. It's millions of jobs, not Republican or Democrat, those are American jobs. And before the president goes down to Brazil and says, "You guys ought to drill more oil," we need to be doing things here. Let me just finish up. We have a couple of other questions in there, and I'll try to write these down if you've got more than one question.
Sales tax.
Sales tax. I believe that right now we're taxed too much. If we're going to address our taxes, we need to address all of our taxes. Let's do something to streamline it, to make it fair. But just to arbitrarily pick out one industry as a winner or a loser, just will shut down jobs in a different part of the nation. So I think we've got to address our overall tax policy. And then lastly, on the stimulus, it didn't work. It was a trillion dollars of money that was thrown out there. The president said that our unemployment rate would never get above 8%. We're well beyond it, and it's continuing to go up. So there are things that we've got to do to not only rein in spending, but to cut regulation and get people back to work. I offered one bill dealing with federal projects. In states like California, when we have SEQA, the Environmental Equality Act, that has some of the most strenuous regulations, why do we need to go through the process twice with national EPAs? I mean, it doesn't make sense to just stop projects or stop progress because you're going through multiple regulations. So there are things we can do to streamline it so that we can actually get jobs moving again.
I'm Len Logus, and I've been registered nurse at Dr.'s Medical Center, been there for 27 years. And just seeing what's happening to healthcare is very discouraging. And it's funny you mention taxes, because I think if we would tax some of the big business instead of always putting it on the backs of the middle class and the low-income people, I think we'd have plenty of money, plenty of money that everyone would have healthcare, and we wouldn't have to cut these entitlements you're talking about.
I would just say, you know, we can't continue the class warfare, that it's rich versus poor, middle class. If we streamline our taxes, there will be more money coming in. I mean, we spend so much.
From where? From the middle class? No. They're not taxing Wall Street, they're not taxing big business at all.
If we streamline our taxes, if we do a fair tax, if we do even a flat tax. Let me explain. If I need to be louder, I could be louder. But let me finish explaining, because she asked her question, and I will be happy to answer every question out here until there's no more questions. So, you know, there are several different plans out there. A fair tax, a flat tax, but by streamlining, even by the president's standards, he has said that we need to cut a lot of the duplication in taxes. There will be more money out there for revenue, as well as if we actually get people back to work, that's gonna create the greatest revenue.
...of the H.R. 1848, the MAG 1% spending reduction act of 2011.
I'm gonna pull out there on the bell. You know, I think there are a number of different good plans out there, but this is another common sense one, that just 1% annually is a small cut to make, but overall it gets us back to getting a balanced budget.
I'm very concerned about our aging population, even though you've had good health habits. You often have chronic problems that can be managed but not cured, and we're gonna have to have a more efficient way of delivering healthcare. Also, I think, I don't see how you can just pick out old people and provide Medicare. I think you're gonna have to spread the risk among healthy younger people and older people to make it work. I don't know just how this would happen, but I think it's gonna have to be spread through. You know, if I were starting an insurance company, I wouldn't just insure a company that insured people over 65, who had a lot of illnesses and chronic conditions. So the other thing I wanted to say was, I wanted to know how the tax cuts made between 2000 and 2008, and our costs of the Iraq and Afghan wars affected the amount of the deficit.
Yes.
I was trying to figure out how many questions there were in there. Let me address.
Just one question, the other was a comment.
Okay. Under the Clinton years, we had about 6 trillion in debt. While we had huge surpluses at the time, money wasn't, didn't go back towards the debt. So when President Bush took over, he started with 6 trillion. I think he took that up to 9 and 3/4 trillion. Part of that was TARP, but the good percentage of that was going into Iraq and then Afghanistan. And then President Obama has taken it up over 4 trillion, now an additional 2 trillion with stimulus, was about a trillion of that. And then a good part of that was the escalation of more troops going into Afghanistan, the 30,000. So we do expect that, and Libya as well, yes, we do expect that we're gonna see some downsizing of that. I meet with a lot of veterans, I'm on the Veterans Committee, and it's difficult. I go over to Walter Reed and met, you know, just recently, there was a young man from Oakhurst that lost both of his legs. You know, I've had a lot of conversations with these brave warriors that have come back and, you know, when I served in my country, I spent 16 years in the Air Force. When I was over in Desert Storm, I knew why we were there. I knew what our exit strategy was. I knew what our goal was to accomplish before we came home. But talking to our men and women over there now, there's not that same strategic layout. And oftentimes, they feel like they're fighting for us with both hands tied behind their back. So we need to change that.
I am Joel Williams, and my wife is Shelm, and we have a little hair salon, a gift shop, and a counseling center, actually, all rolled into one.
Hello, my name's Kim Nicholson, and I wrote a book called Beneath Archer's Tree. I've known a lot of really great storytellers, hunters, fishermen, teachers. It's all contained within these pages, from cover to cover. There's something for everybody. The stories are all based around Modesto and surrounding areas.
Make Crow Trading Company your first stop.
Yeah, my name is John Copsford, and I'm a proud Modeston and a teacher, and a bit of angry during the past few weeks during the debt limit debacle. I feel really frightened and frightened that Congress is willing to play Russian roulette without our economy. Self-market's reaction to congressional dysfunction has been brutal, with the major indexes down more than 11% over the past 10 days, and 5% down today on the S&amp;P 500. And that affects everybody's pocketbooks, too. Wall Street's verdict is in, Congress is the problem, it's not been the solution of late. The Republicans' just-saying-no approach to taxation is as stubborn and ineffective as the Democrats' death-grip bond entitlements. Will you ever support a bipartisan grand bargain that strikes a fair balance between spending cuts and new tax revenues? And compromise is not a four-letter word.
Well, John, I think that there are things that we can do. I think that a compromise is addressing our overall tax policy. But even as the president likes to point out, the corporate loophole on private jets, look, I think we can close a lot of loopholes. But we've got to do it while we address all of our taxes. But to just single out the aircraft industry, and talk to my friend Mike Pompeo, who's a brand-new freshman out of Wichita, Kansas, to shut down his major industry like you've shut down my major industry in agriculture, is just wrong. We can't afford to pick winners and losers. That's not the political game that we should be playing. We address our overall tax policy as a nation, something that's fair for everybody. And if I had my way, I certainly would not have proposed this plan, and I certainly would not have rolled it out like we have. I can tell you, I, you know, I met with economists from Standard &amp; Poor's, from Moody's, I met with Art Laffer. I mean, there were a long list of resources that were available to us, and I was one of the longest holdouts. You know, I believe that we've got to change the direction of our nation. And to go out there and just borrow another 2.4 trillion on top of over 14 trillion that we owe right now, I owed to my kids to change the direction. And I take that vote very seriously.
Your district, particularly this part of your district, has one of the highest foreclosure rates in the nation. Your district has a much higher unemployment rate than other districts throughout the nation, if you look at it as a whole. And yet, one of the first things that you did after being sworn in as congressman back in January is hold a big fancy party for big fundraisers and lobbyists that really didn't make a lot of money, but I'm sure opened a lot of channels for you. Do you really think that that, talk about your class warfare. Those are the people that are wagey class warfare against working people and low-income people all across America. And yet, the first thing that you did was have a big party for them and tried to, you know, make a few bridges with those people. Do you really think that set the right tone for the way you want to be a congressman? Please explain. Thank you.
You know, I had a lot of friends come into town, and had a lot of new members that had huge debts, and I was willing to help out with that. You know, I've not criticized President Obama for going back to Chicago and charging $35,000 a plate for his birthday dinner. You know, it's unfortunate, and it's politics. I can tell you, raising money's not fun. I wish that we didn't have to do it. But, you know, when I ran for the state senate, they spent $10 million against me. A lot of that was union duty. But it was a lot of money that was taken out to spend in the political process, and it's unfortunate. Our elections are way too expensive, and the way that this money is raised is not only difficult, it's, you know, I don't think it's anything any of us enjoy.
Well, Len, I hope you will support campaign finance reform of some kind, so that you, I mean, you're not put in a position that looks awkward to your constituents. My other follow-up is that you voted for the Paul Ryan budget, and one of the most under-reported stories in the Snack of the Woods is that the Paul Ryan budget, of course, ends Medicare as we know it. I wonder how you can justify that very important move?
It's just not true. That's one of the lies that's out there. You know what? Look, I'm somebody who, you're not gonna fool me, I'm somebody who reads the bill. I wouldn't say everybody reads the bills, but I do. I spent a lot of time with Paul Ryan. We went through the budget. I understand it very, very well. If you're 55 or older, there will be absolutely no change to Medicare as we know it. Now, the big lie is to try to just sit back and pretend. Let's just pretend nothing's gonna happen. I mean, you saw the charts. I didn't make those charts up. We're gonna spend three times what we're bringing in. Medicare's not only broken, it's not going to exist anymore. So we either address it, and that's not Republicans saying that, that's the president, that's the Democrats. Bipartisan, we all understand that Medicare is broke. The question is, if you don't like the Paul Ryan plan, if you don't like the plan that the Republicans put out of the House, then show us another plan. We're willing to discuss it. We're willing to look at other ideas. But the very, to say that this destroys Medicare is just not true. And I'll explain it, I'll explain it again. If you're 55 or older, there's absolutely no change in Medicare at all. Now, if you're under 55, which I am, there's gonna be some changes. I would rather see a change to my own Medicare than not have it exist at all. So if you're under 55, you're getting the same plan that Montez had. It's not the best plan in the world, but it at least is a fair system that saves you. And again, if you don't like it, let's come up with another plan. But don't sit back and just ignore the fact that there's a problem.
Congressman, thanks for coming to Modesto. This must be exhausting. It is for us, and I can't imagine what it's like for you, so thanks for taking the time and not being a hurry. I wanted to thank you for your work with the Veterans Committee, and that, I'd just say personally, my experience, being able to finally purchase Tricare as a reservist, has been a godsend. I'm grateful for it. It's affordable, it's been wonderful. My wife has cancer, I'm a small-business owner, and to try to purchase that care for her and for us and her family on that open market would jam me up pretty bad. So I'm grateful for that. That really keeps me in my career field, and I want to stay as long as I can, in large part because of that. So thanks for supporting that. I know lots of DOD cuts are coming, and there's gonna be more and more. I wanted to ask you about, you talked about simplifying the tax code, and I wanted to ask, when I was in my twenties, I worked as a laborer, got taxed about 15% on the federal side. In my thirties, I worked as a pastor, I was a schoolteacher, and a county worker, got taxed about 25%. All those were painful, but they were doable, and I was able to take care of business. Now, in my forties, I own a business, and I earn well over the $250,000 benchmark. Since the Bush era tax cuts, I paid between 7, not 70, not 17, but 7% to 11% after all my deductions. It makes me angry, Congressman, because the hard-working laborers and teachers, pastors, just the average hard-working American are paying for my deductions. And I want to know, with the simplified tax that you're talking about, what am I gonna pay on the top end? I hope it's more than 1%. One digit.
There are several plans out there. It is a debate that we're going to take up. I'm hopeful that this new committee addresses it in a bipartisan fashion. We've got to address our tax code. But, you know, I wouldn't say that there's any one plan out there that addresses the overall, what is going to be there, certainly a fair tax and a flat tax, but I would say the majority of the plans, you know, those in the higher brackets are still going to pay more.
My name is Indira Alden, and I'm from the East Coast, but I have moved to Modesto recently, and family have been a really great city, totally.
Thank you, welcome.
Now, first thing I'd like to know, did you sign, did you sign the Locust pledge to not raise revenues on the increase of millionaires? Have you signed his pledge?
Yes.
On the stimulus, if Obama had not bailed out the automobile industry, there would be no automobile industry in this country today. Now, let's see, in other words, now you said you have young children, do they go to public schools?
Always have, yes.
Okay. Well, that's great. So you would rather cut education in California and all over the country, college kids, local kids, everything, instead of raising revenues from countries, not from, well, even from countries, but reselling our jobs overseas, raising revenues for millionaires, billionaires, all the airplanes, all the corporations that are making, the oil companies that are making billions of dollars and paying practically no taxes, and everything is coming down to the middle class and lower classes? How can you not raise revenues and promise to implement a new program?
You know, I just don't agree with the class warfare. I mean, you know, I pay my taxes, you know, to just start sinking them. Well, if somebody's not paying their taxes, we need to go after them. Then, yeah, then let's address the loopholes. But let's address the tax policy fair across the board. Why do we want to just pick one industry and shut them down? You know, we did attack the yacht industry. We used to be some of the largest yacht builders in the world. We're no longer, we don't have that industry anymore. So we can shut down, let's just shut down the private jet industry. Let's end the jobs in Wichita, Kansas. Let's end them in Georgia, and let's send those overseas. And then what do we pick next? Which other loophole, if we're just gonna address them one at a time, which one do we pick next? I mean, it's gotta end. We gotta quit pitting the rich versus the poor, middle class, and address tax policy across the board. But I, you know, I will address one other thing. I do think we need more revenue. I do believe the best, the best way to create more revenue is when you're at 9.4% nationally, when you're at 20% in some of the valley counties, you put people back to work. How? Well, I have a number of plans. Well, let's start with water. Let's get the Delta pumps moving again. Let's get water to the west side of the valley. The timber industry. We have clean energy with biomass and hydroelectricity. Let's get the timber industry moving again before our forests burn up. We have a number of different issues that we can address. Let's address oil across the nation. Rather than sending our troops in a harm's way where we've got interest in oil, let's have our own independence here. Let's get oil shale moving.
That's right.
Let's have a balanced portfolio of wind, solar, but also oil and natural gas, biomass, and hydro. Let's have American jobs created by having a better energy policy. Infrastructure? I actually chaired the committee on economic development, emergency management, and public buildings. I'm carrying... If you'll allow me to finish, I will answer every question here tonight. But I have a bill that addresses all of our public buildings. This is a bipartisan solution. We have 14,000 buildings that are excess properties that aren't being used. Why don't we sell them? Why don't we create the revenue, $15 billion in new revenue? The president concluded it in his State of the Union. But that's 15 billion. It doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or Republican. If we're not using it, let's get it back to the benefit of reducing our debt. We have 1.2 million properties that we need to better manage. We're all tightening our belts. Why don't we combine departments into the same building? Why don't we take the leasing authority away from the different agencies and combine it under one entity? That's not a Republican issue. That's a Democratic issue. There are solutions that Republicans and Democrats can agree on. I mean, this is something I'm working directly with the administration on, and we're going to solve it.
Hello. My name's Kim Nicholson, and I wrote a book called Beneath Archer's Tree. I've known a lot of really great storytellers, hunters, fishermen, teachers. It's all contained within these pages from cover to cover. There's something for everybody. The stories are all based around Modesto and surrounding areas.
Experience the difference. Make Crow Trading Company your first stop.
My name is JP. I'm the founder of Trinity Networking Teams. TNT is a faith-friendly marketplace ministry, and currently, we're meeting each Wednesday at a different business location on Wednesday at noon. The best way to get ahold of Trinity Networking Teams is through Facebook. We're on Facebook under Trinity Networking Teams. You can also reach us online at trinitynetworkingusa.com. You can also give us a call at 571-1990. We look forward to seeing you at our next TNT meeting.
... class warfare several times, and I kind of feel like I'm on the losing side of that war. And the problem is, if you... And you can Google this if anybody's really curious about it, but about 400 people in the United States control about 40% of the wealth. So, how can you justify... You know, you're saying you want to level out the tax code. And I've seen what that commission is looking at. They're looking at going after now the pension plans that people contribute to on a tax-deferred basis. I don't know if they're going to catch the rock guys on the way out or the ones that just use the 401K as a pre-tax situation beforehand. You know, if they're looking at that, that's the last thing that most people have left. I mean, so many people around here, their houses have lost so much value that the new interest rates, they're so low, they don't even itemize anymore. And I've been in taxes, so I know that. And so, whenever we've got situations where capital gains are taxed at 15%, but yet somebody's wages are taxed at 28%, you're creating a situation where that class warfare could turn into a real war. And I want to understand, okay, you signed that Grover Norquist pledge. You know, on the same token, would you sign a pledge, sign a scene, "We will never go to war again. I will never..." You don't know what the situations are. How could you sign something like that? And how do you explain 40... You know, 40% of the wealth in the hands of 400 people in this country? That is Mexico.
I just have a fundamental belief that we don't have a taxing problem. We have a spending problem.
That's another one.
We continue to spend too much money. If we want to look at our entire tax code, I think that not only will be more revenue, but it'll be a fairer system.
So, what's spitting too much is what caused those 400 people to have 40% of the... I don't understand how that happens.
What's their tax rate?
No, but, you know, I also believe that, you know, pick the company. You know, we're all frustrated that companies are leaving our area, that the great jobs are leaving our area. I just have a fundamental belief that if I go out there and tax another company, that's just one more reason they said, "Wait a minute. I can't afford to do business here. Why don't I take my business to somewhere that's going to be a lot cheaper for me?" There are great companies that don't want to leave California. There are great companies that don't want to leave our great country.
But there are... And why somebody with banker stock interest is earning 15% is, you know, worth less than the guy who's going out and teaching and getting a 28% tax rate? Doesn't make any sense.
I can't address every profession, but it's something that we should look at the entire tax code, because the tax code is broken.
I finally have a question that can answer with a simple yes or no. If the GOP takes control of the Senate, are you personally in favor of it, and will you push the Obamacare repeal?
Yes.
Yeah, Tom Ryan. And in your comments, you said that nobody was happy with your budget deal. You felt like you were going to slam or... I think you did a forfeit, because I really feel like this country is built on compromise. I feel like this country is built on compromise. And we have a 4 trillion possible, $4 trillion deficit reduction plan between President and Boomer and Boehner. And I'd like to know... He went back to the Republican Congress, and they said, "No new taxes." You know, the deficit went up after Clinton left, because we went on to the two wars. We reduced taxes twice. And never in the history of the United States have we reduced taxes during a time of war. We always increased them. And that added 2 trillion to our deficit by reducing the taxes. So, I feel like part of this is not only spending, and I do agree with cutting spending. I do. But there has to be a balance, and it was caused two ways. Cutting taxes during the Bush administration and then increasing spending, the wars, and increased spending. So, we need to have a balanced approach. And this no, no, no from Republicans on... Come on, we got to spread it out. Every economist says you're not going to get out of this by cutting only. You have to increase revenue. And I do not agree with going into anything saying, "I will never." And when you sign that thing, you will never increase revenue. I just say that's the wrong way. We need to compromise. We would have never had a constitution without a compromise. We need to... It's disgusting watching it and listening to it and reading from the Sacramento Bee, which is now called Modesto Bee. But, you know, that this really... We need to have some common sense people there. Come on, really. I mean, I'm pleading with you. I mean, this is disgusting.
Thanks, Tom. I would just remind you that while they are called the Bush tax cuts, President Obama, Democrat-controlled Senate, Democrat-controlled Congress, both passed them again. At the outset, they are set to expire. It's another issue that we're going to have to address as we address our overall tax policy.
One more thing. One more thing. The way I... Why I decided to go with a forfeit, because you guys couldn't agree on anything before this deadline. Now, you're going to have 12 people equally split. You're going to put in six people, no new taxes. Democrats are going to put six people, no cutting revenue, and we're going to be in the same place again. I don't want compromise.
The cuts are going to go through, whether Republicans or Democrats agree to it. The sequester issue, that's why we put it in.
I know the cuts are going through, but that's not long-term. That's just in this next one. We need to get both things going, cutting and raising revenue. And help us get into... Not compromise.
I've seen a lot, and I've been through a lot. And all I've seen, Congressman, is people like me tightening our belts even more, and the big corporation and the rich loosening the earth, getting fatter. That's all I've seen. It's not the middle class. It's not the poor. It's always on bats like the pain taxpayers die. And we are tired of keep paying and paying and paying. My second question to you is, our governor of California is putting across $100 million cut in our program, the IHSS. We take care of the sick, the elderly, the people that they threw out of the state hospitals when Reagan was governor. We are the ones that take care of them. We also are the ones that take care of our parents, our sons, our daughters, when something happens to them mentally or physically. And what I want my question is, do you stand by that $100 million cut? Or will you help us stop that million-dollar cut on us?
It is... I mean, that's an issue that the governor is doing from a Sacramento perspective. I have not weighed in on a lot of those since I left the state senate, primarily because of the budget here is so upside-down. But I understand the work that you do every day. I mean, when my father was sick and before he passed away, we had in-home support services in-home to be able to help him out. You know, families go through some painful times when you've got a sick member. As far as the just taxing corporations, I just don't think that that's the answer. We'll have to disagree on it. I mean, just to arbitrarily raise the tax, and we just went through this whole debate with... Let me finish. You know, I disagreed with the president on all of the bailouts, that companies were too big to fail. That's just... That's not America. That's not the country that I grew up in. We have employers that take a risk, the job creators that take a risk. You know, when I started my business, I came home as a young man and said, "Honey, let's take a second out on the house. I've got this great idea." Luckily, she was willing to take the risk with me. Otherwise, you know, we wouldn't have had that opportunity to start a business. But I take, you know, every job that... Every time we hire somebody, I take that very serious. We went through this debate on a variety of different issues, dealing with oil. You know, on the other side of the aisle continued to come in and say, "Well, if you just close the loopholes on those oil companies, if you just raise those oil company taxes." I said, "Wait a minute. We move all of the goods through the Central Valley, all of the agribusiness. The farmers that go out there and harvest the fresh fruits and vegetables that we have, you just arbitrarily attack the oil industry? When we've got $4, $5 gas prices already? You think gas prices are going to go down? Do you think the cost of our food is going to go down? No, it's going to go up. We can't just pick winners and losers when we're dealing with tax policy. We've got to address taxes."
My question differs somewhat from what's already been asked. I'm curious, when the final... Before the final vote came on the budget, it was made well-known by our president as well as one of the parties that if it got through the House, the Senate would reject it, and if they didn't, then the president would veto it. And my question is, what changed the president's mind after it was passed in both houses?
The president's mind was changed before the vote came up. I would say primarily the only thing that changed between the time of the first vote and the second vote was the sequester, which actually makes the bill stronger. I mean, that's the piece that guarantees the cuts. So, there's a guaranteed vote on the balanced budget amendment, guaranteed caps, and the cuts were modest.
Hi. My name is Kami Ferrera. I'm your co-chair for UDW Stalest County. I am a sister of a developmentally disabled brother. I actually run a program for the handicapped for over 20 years. I think what the gentleman's trying to say, are you going to help us? Because the ones that are out here doing the work that we do... Oh, okay. Federal dollars. That's our secretary. She's smart. She knows. Anyway, the type of work that we do is hard work. I'm like you. I've worked on the books, and I can show my social security since I was 14 years old. Not... I mean, kids nowadays can't do that, okay? I'm not given my age, but I have a 55-year-old brother. And I'm going to tell you that I had to give up my work. I went through divorce at the same time. My kids were in crises. I had to do what was best for the family. My mother was passing. I am now making $9.38 an hour. And the reason I chose to do that is because I am a sister from a brother that was raised in state hospitals. It was sexually, physically, and emotionally abused, and I was not going to put my brother back in that care. I've worked in care homes. I've seen the work. I'll break my back. I need surgery right now. But you know what? I'm not going to go and get the surgery, because my brother needs me. What's going to happen to him if I can't use my arm to lift him? He's 55 and he's over 200 pounds. We're only making $9.38 an hour, and we're fighting. Yeah, and our insurance just got cut. But you know what? To me, what's most important is my family and taking care of them. And we need to look for... I'm a huge advocate for children's crises, for the disabled, and for the elderly. And I will speak up, and God give me this mouth a reason for a reason. So, we want to know what you're going to do to help us. UDW Stalest County. Thank you.
You know, very similar to saying both questions. I mean, I'm in the US Congress. I'm working in Washington, DC. This is a state type. So, I mean, it's not something I get to vote on. You know, I can send the governor a letter.
What can you do to help us? Help us help ourselves, because we're the people.
Be willing to get together with you outside of your group. We can do work together, but is that... You know, a hundred...
People willing to get together with us if you're outside of us.
I'm willing to get together with everybody. Yeah. That's what I'm here for.
Experience the difference. Make Crow Trading Company your first stop.
You know what that sound was? That was the sound of a family's life-changing. This is Bobby Hart from North American Wrestling, letting you know that I'm downtown in Modesto every weekend, and if I see you drinking and driving, I'm going to choke you out. So, throw your keys to a friend and party safe, and that's words from the heart.
A public service announcement from ModestoNews.org.
Hello. My name's Kim Nicholson, and I...
Hello, my name's Kim Nicholson, and I wrote a book called Beneath Archer's Tree. I've known a lot of really great storytellers, hunters, fishermen, teachers. It's all contained within these pages. From cover to cover, there's something for everybody. The stories are all based around Modesto and surrounding areas.
I know you talked about, let's take a look at the whole tax code. And I'm not asking you to debate that tonight. Personally, I think it should have been debated in the last three months until the point of what happened on Monday. But that's neither here nor there. But consideration should be made to revise the tax code in concern of taxing incentives for corporations that send our jobs overseas. We could better utilize that money by retraining our people here at home and going back to work.
Retraining isn't a problem. Our wage rates are too high, so all the companies send the jobs over to China and Korea and Pakistan, wherever they can get them. Labor is not a free market here.
Talk too much. My wife will yell at me.
First of all, I want to thank you for your hard work and dedication to us. And my question is, back in the 60s when Johnson was in office, Medicare, he gave Medicare to drug addicts, alcoholics, people from other countries, people who have never paid in Medicare, and they still get it. And I don't understand why that's never been brought up in Washington as to why these people get Medicare benefits that I've paid in, that you've paid in, that you've paid in. It was for us. It wasn't for that purpose. The question is, has anybody brought that up, or do you think they ever will?
You know, the Medicare program has expanded in such a way that it's just broke. I mean, we are out of money. It's something that is on a path to sustainability. We're working to come up with a solution. Obviously, you saw the Paul Ryan's budget. That was one way to address it. But we expect that we're going to have, it has to be a bipartisan solution. So it's something we're going to continue to bring up. We've got to save Medicare. It's not something we can just allow to go bankrupt, and we've got to have a good plan to do that.
Can you answer my question, please? You never did.
On retraining?
On retraining and what happened in the last agreement on Monday. Do you know of any federal money that was, that has been brought from the states concerning retraining? If you don't, I understand.
I don't know. I do know that we passed Pell Grants. We did an increase for Pell Grants. I mean, that is one area where we are focusing on higher ed. We need to make sure that our veterans that are coming home, many of them have lost homes and need to be retrained, and we need to make sure that there's a priority put on that, which is something we've addressed in the Veterans Committee. I don't believe that there was anything in this bill that dealt with retraining. Sorry, and I didn't mean to dismiss it, but...
I appreciate the comment that was made, that how frustrated we as the citizens of this wonderful country are with our government. There are very few politicians that you can trust as far as you can throw them. And my concern is, and I think would help eliminate, the evil that's going on in this country is term limits. And what are the chances of that happening when those that benefit from them are, would be the ones that would be voting for it?
You know, I don't know if it's helped in California. I mean, we certainly have the term limits here as a state, and, you know, Senator Monti and I both went through that. I've always been a big proponent of term limits. I would not say it's helped California. We are certainly in a very, very tough time right now. You know, and from a federal perspective, you know, it takes so long to move up into a chairmanship to where you can really not only change policy as a nation, but really affect things for your own state. So, you know, it's something that I've supported in the past, but I'm really concerned with the direction that California is going in with this term.
Those that are working studying, all of us in the White House, career politicians.
I just say, I mean, it's an issue, but there are, yeah. Yes.
My brother Ryan served in Iraq. I served in Iraq, and I take this room that we all think are veterans, and thank you to everybody for that. But I'm not going to buy oil and water, and that's our job creation and small businesses. And I'll make it real local here. A company called Hershey's had 600 jobs. They were good jobs in the city of Oakdale. And they moved to Mexico. America's favorite candy bar is named in Mexico now. Had 600 jobs. We were in San Francisco, Teamsters. Teamsters created, so they had healthcare. They were able to pay for their kids' medical and all that kind of stuff.
Good jobs.
They were good jobs. So, I mean, I know that if it was in San Diego's up here, or even, I mean, we really need to look for jobs because when we're sending them over there and you want to ignore the class warfare, if we keep sending them overseas, you're going to be answering a class warfare. It just doesn't make sense that we send jobs over here. And Hershey's is profiting. Their profits go up, and it's fine. I'm not against profits. I'm for jobs here in the United States that pay a living wage, healthcare.
I believe that, again, natural resources are not only one of the best opportunities to solve our job crisis here, but on a national level, you know, even with the oil crisis that we're having right now, I mean, if we're able to drill or move the permit process along or even utilize oil shale or natural gas, that not only creates the jobs and the immediate impact of that, but it lowers the price of me doing farming. It lowers the price of Hershey's being able to conduct their business because their energy costs go down. I mean, regulations are a huge issue to driving our country, our companies out of the country. But our high price of energy is also impacting it as well. So, I mean, we've got to address not just taxes or regulation, we've got to address our energy prices and all of those other driving factors that make us uncompetitive and make companies want to go to other countries to be able to survive.
Let's be honest, why they moved to other countries. It could be regulation. A lot of companies in California moved to Texas, but those are still American jobs. It's because labor is cheaper. And we don't want to work for pity. We want to work for dollars. We want to buy the Ford's and the Chevy's. We want them built here.
How many questions can I have? I haven't done this before. I'm very nervous. Mary, those treaties that sent our jobs overseas way back when they started, quite some time ago, what can we do to reverse those treaties that sent the jobs overseas? Jail, get our jobs back? That's my question.
I'm not sure what you mean by treaties.
Start with NAFTA.
Tar.
GM is making cars in Canada and Mexico.
Just, I guess...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't know that I have a good answer for you. I mean, we could reverse NAFTA, obviously. We're working on exports.
How did those jobs start going overseas? Think back. Those jobs of ours were sent overseas. The corporations sent them over because taxes were lower over there. There must be a way that politicians can send our embassy people or whoever it needs. I'm not a political person, as you can tell. But why isn't somebody working to get those jobs back? Not just us working on it, but those people working on it.
That's right.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue that we're facing right now is we're, you know, we've always been very competitive. We've always been a country that has the greatest opportunities on jobs and on businesses being here. We've allowed a lot of companies to leave our great nation because it's less expensive to turn a profit or to build Ford, for example. Built a lot of its cars in Mexico. Cheaper labor and cheaper expenses to do so.
And the regulations are better for other countries. So why not work on that end at the same time you're working on getting jobs here?
Absolutely. We are, and we're cutting regulations. We've got to cut, we've actually went out to all of the job creators and asked them, what are the number one regulations that cause you to send jobs overseas or to other countries? Those are the things that we're addressing, and those are the things we're taking directly to the president.
So you're working on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's no answer to that. There's no answer to that.
Okay.
It's all a matter of wages lower with all these countries around the world. What are you going to do about that?
The other question I have...
I'm happy to pass this microphone around to everybody here, but she's waited a long time, and I'm going to answer every one of her questions, and we'll move the microphone around.
I appreciate this. I don't know if you can do this or not, or answer it, but recently there was a bill that went through the state senate where they are allowing, and I, this is my understanding, illegal aliens to get their tuition paid in state colleges. Is that correct? Do you know about that?
I believe that was.
Can they just pass those through without running by us?
Yes.
And what can we do about that?
Let me address a question. It is a state issue. It's certainly been something that they've tried to run through the federal government as well. But it is a state issue. It is being paid for, at least currently. The previous pieces of legislation were all government-funded. The current one is at least starting right now today with private funds. But the, it did go through Sacramento, through the state senate, through the state assembly, and signed by the governor. We had no impact on that from the federal level.
But is there something that we, as a people, can do?
Both, yeah. I mean, both, and let your voice be heard and make sure we're letting the people are going to make the decisions. Do you believe that?
Okay, but don't forget about the treaties.
I'm an independent, so I get pretty frustrated with both Democrats and Republicans. But I would just like to have you go back and tell them to please, please, don't worry about getting reelected. Just get with the program and give us a fair...
I would tell you this, I think it's a very interesting and different time in Congress right now. They have 89 brand-new members of Congress, actually 99 with the entire freshman class. Most of them are business owners that want to just change the direction of our country and willing to make bold decisions. I mean, you know, we're talking about different debates that we're having right now because most people are willing to hold the line and be strong to get our country back. And I would put myself with the rest of that freshman class, if I'm there for one term, look, I'm happy to come home and farm, run my business, but we've got serious issues at stake. I want our country back. I want it there for my kids, whether it's saving Medicare or making sure that Social Security is whole for the future. We've got some serious issues. The unemployment rate here on a local level as well as a nationwide level is something that has to be addressed. Not a Republican or Democrat issue, it's an American issue to get people working again. And we've got to do everything we can to do that.
Thank you. I just read where you moved to the great Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you send your kids to the public school system there. That's one of the greatest schools, have a product of that great Commonwealth in their education system. My question to you tonight is, you said you dealt with and listened to a lot of economists before you voted on this bill that you just voted on. What baseline did you use? Did you fully read and understand the bill? And what happened to the 72-hour guideline that Republicans put in place to make sure that we have a transparent, open debate? And then it was brought down to the floor for once again, another debate. As far as my kids going to school in Virginia, that's a personal decision. I'm a dad. Absolutely.
And, you know, it was a personal decision that I didn't, actually didn't want to move my kids. My son is 15 years old. He's going to be a sophomore this year. Played basketball throughout the valley, throughout the state with the same group of kids for seven or eight years now. He finally came to me one day and said, Dad, you know, you're not able to come to my games like you were. I know if I come to DC with you, you'll be able to make more. It's a personal decision. And you can criticize my job all you want. You can criticize, you know, whether I'm having enough town halls or whether you agree or disagree with my position. This is a personal decision. I've got to be a father and...
I wasn't criticizing your move. I was trying to say that I'm thankful that you are. As a family man, even though you're our congressman, you need to be with your family. It's nice that your kids, I know that my kids were there when I was raising them, they needed me. I was saying thank you, complimenting you, not criticizing, by no means.
I'm not getting too many compliments these days, so I don't recognize them when they come, so thank you.
I think I'm equally frustrated as most of the folks in here as well. And I think if there was a message that all of us would like you to take back to Washington, it's that the people by and large think of what's going on, and there's a joke.
Yes.
No offense to you, but I appreciate you being here and listening to us. I'm loaded on you. But what's going on in Washington is mind-boggling. It's frustrating. It's disturbing. And like the gentleman said over there, there's no feeling of compromise. You have a few good ideas, but you're just one guy. And if there's not about 280 or 300 people up there on your side, your ideas are going nowhere. So my comment is, we need you to take back to Washington and tell your fellow representative that the people are fed up and there's no leadership. There's, Congress is just, they're just fumbling in the dark, and it's disturbing. I'm trying to get ready to retire, and I don't know where my 401K is going. It's going down. And you want to cut, I mean, you're threatening to cut Social Security, and my 401K is going down that I saved for 20 years and tried to build up, and it's going down, down, down because savings accounts pay squat. What are we going to do? It's disturbing. And I see no, I see no voices in Congress that show any sense of understanding of the problem, any leadership, any ability to get your organization galvanized to really do the things that need to be done. So my question is, where is that $2 trillion coming from? What's the impact on our country at large? And the other question was, what's the difference between a dollar in cuts and a dollar in revenue? Increased revenue and a dollar in decreased cuts?
You know, it's a very general question. I think it depends on which taxes you're raising or which areas that you're cutting. Right now, the discretionary cuts that we're making right now, we don't believe are going to have an impact on jobs. We believe that we're cutting a lot of the wasteful spending that is going throughout the 10-year budget plan. So that, I mean, we can only address the discretionary cuts right now. The 1.5 trillion that is yet to be decided on, that the committee is going to be tasked with first, there's going to be a lot on the table. And we all know that Medicare is broke. The question is, how are we going to solve it? And this may be one of the areas that they take on. They may take on tax policy. I would love to see this committee take on tax policy and actually create something that not only makes it easier to file your taxes on a postcard, but actually have something that brings in more revenue because we've got a streamlined process. So I think it's a very historic time, and we have an opportunity to redefine government as we know it. And this may be one of the areas that they take on, they may take on tax policy. I would love to see this committee take on tax policy and actually create something that not only makes it easier to file your taxes on a postcard, but actually has something that brings in more revenue because we've got a streamlined process. So I think it's a very historic time, and we have an opportunity to redefine government as we know it. We have to.
We are here, are talking about the wealthy versus the poor, but there's 179 illegal immigrant families on welfare in Stanislaw County alone. The other day, we went to a thing for Christian Adams, or Christiansen, our sheriff, and he says he has one where a drug went wrong, drug deal went wrong, one illegal immigrant killed the other illegal immigrant, now we're going to pay for that. My question is, I know we need the Bresero program for the farmers, but why are they out there on welfare? Why don't we take them, they have to sign saying, no, they're not illegal, they're illegal in this country, why don't we just deport them when they sign that thing? And these people have all the money they wanted.
What is your evidence for 179?
I was at the meeting at the border supervisors at Stanislaw County, and the lady, Applegate, told us that number. I got up and asked, how many of them are illegal? And she got up and told us. So we're wasting a lot of money on people that don't even belong in this country. Let's see it to Americans.
That sounds like a county issue.
No, no.
I'm just kidding with them. We do have to address our immigration policy, there's an E-Verify bill that will be coming up this fall, is one that we are still amending, we've got to make sure that we have a guest worker program. You know, some people talk about the Bresero program, but it was a way to bring in legal guest workers that were sending money back home to create a better life back home. It happens in every country, we just need to have a legal process, and we've got to have some, you know, we have to have some, both politicians are willing to take some initiative to get some of these things done. This has been kicked down the road by Republicans, Democrats, and the administration, and we've got to solve the problem.
I'm Joe Williams, my wife Michelle, and we have a little hair salon, gift shop, and counseling center, actually, all rolled into one.
Hello, my name's Kim Nicholson, and I wrote a book called Beneath Archer's Tree. I've known a lot of really great storytellers, hunters, fishermen, teachers, it's all contained within these pages, from cover to cover, there's something for everybody. The stories are all based around Modesto and surrounding areas.
You know, most businesses, cities and counties in the state of California have laid people off. You talk about the federal government and some of the programs we're talking about as far as, you know, cutting the FAD at the federal level. Can you tell us what maybe the savings could be if they were to cut some of the jobs? I think that Obama administration has hired 100,000 extra people or something like that since he took office.
Everyone, next question.
We're a military family, and my grandson is getting ready to be deployed to Afghanistan. So, this would be a second tour. And in September of next year, the president is going to cut one-third of the troops in Can be for political reasons, because elections are a few weeks after that, so can be for political, so I discount that. So, but it's a four-star general that I listened to said it's going to endanger the troops that are left there much more, there'd be a much higher casualty rate since we're down a third in Afghanistan. Is there anything Congress can do to help protect our boys that are still there?
I have a quick question. I just about had an aneurysm the other day when I read your response on your website regarding the Bader Obama bill, and you said that you voted to shrink the size of government and not to raise taxes. Well, I don't know, I know that Washington thinks things different than we do, but when your budget increases from year to year, that's not a cut. I don't care if it's a cut in the growth, it's still not a cut. We're spending about 43 cents, borrowing about 43 cents for every dollar that you spend. In my mind, you need to cut spending, actual spending, by 43 cents so that we're not spending more than we're taking in.
All right, you want to answer, or you want to go? You want to go more? Go one more, and then I'll answer a little more.
This is an agricultural state, it's an agricultural county, and farming has changed from small farms to large farms. Because small farms, you can't make a living on anymore, and these states where they have the machine-picked crops understand our need for crews of workers to pick our perishable crops. Do they understand that?
All right, I'm going to go in reverse order. I think it's a challenge to get them to understand. You know, if you talk to the members from other states, they don't realize what a big ag state California is. You know, we're 50% of our fresh foods and vegetables come out of California, and we're losing a lot of those crops to Mexico and to other areas. So we've got a big job ahead of us. But I will tell you that we are working together, especially this freshman class, to make sure that we do have a guest worker program as we're dealing with E-Verify. E-Verify is something that will not only allow us to have a legal process, a documented process, but it'll also make sure that the jobs first go out so that we can help to lower unemployment. Americans have the first opportunity to lose jobs. Subsidies, I expect subsidies to be going away. The Midwest farmers that receive a lot of those subsidies, I would say, you know, this freshman class is united on any of those, we just can't afford them. We need to focus on trade. On the size of the government, I agree. You know, your numbers, whether it's 42 and a half cents or 43 cents of every dollar, we're spending too much money.
How can you call that a cut? Why am I going to lie?
It is...
You didn't shrink?
If you'll allow me to finish, allow me to finish, we're going to keep going here. I'll allow everybody to continue to ask questions, but let me answer. We did cut, it's not enough. I'm not here to grandstand, and let me finish. We're going to be respectful to everybody tonight, and we'll continue, if you've got more questions, you don't agree with me, we'll allow you to continue to go with us.
It's a fact, it's not a cut. There's no cuts.
We'll go on to the next question. Sir, I appreciate all those that are serving our country. I'm concerned with the direction that we're in. We can't afford the two wars that we're in, we certainly can't afford the third one that the President is putting us in. We have to define what our mission is. We have to define what the American interest that we're willing to put our brave men and women in harm's way to defend. But I will make this promise to you, before I vote on anything that reduces our troop size, I will make sure that we continue to have the meetings to make sure that our men and women, their lives are not put in greater jeopardy or greater harm because of those political decisions that are being made. We have to define the mission, we have to define the exit strategy, but we have to also define the rules of engagement. The military men and women that I continue to talk to are worried about being able to see their enemy with guns, with radios, but can't engage. They're left endangered because of what we're asking them to do as a nation, and we owe it to them to define exactly what their mission is and the goals before we arbitrarily pull troops out. The last thing was on the huge number that the government can't define what those jobs are or the necessity of the work that we're doing. I will tell you this, again, I believe that there's still a lot of waste out there that we can cut. You know, I'm focusing on what I focused on at the state level because I do believe that there's an opportunity to sell a lot of properties that we don't need, some of them in our own community, where we can sell, you know, a post office, which may be controversial, but you could redevelop that property in the downtown of Modesto or any, many different downtowns that will not only create jobs and get people back to work, but it also gives us an opportunity to redefine what the mission of the post office is and where we're going to have post offices, redefine what the mission of the SEC is. They just went out and did a lease for $556 million over a weekend. They backdated the contract, they widened it out and changed the documents because they didn't have a fair bid process. We've got to not only make sure that we're selling off the things that we don't need, but we've got to make sure that we're combining agencies. Where I'd like to get to long-term is if we can identify all of our public buildings, and we know how many square feet we have in every building, we can not only justify the amount of square footage we have, we can justify the amount of employees that we're going to have in each of these different agencies and in each of these different buildings. I know how many employees I have, I know how many square feet of office space I have to have, I know how many square feet of warehouse space I have to have to be able to turn my products to be able to create a profit. Why shouldn't government have those same numbers and same statistics? So my objective is not just to sell $15 billion of properties, you know, and have an immediate win for the President, an immediate win for me, and a bipartisan agreement. My objective is to make sure, long-term, we're changing the way that we do business, that we're combining our leasing authority, that we're making sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, and that we ultimately define how many square feet we need per employee so that we're not wasting a lot of money. That's not something that Republicans should agree to, that's something that our country should agree to. I mean, those are the types of bipartisan solutions we ought to be able to agree on to cut the waste and redefine government before we're looking at the cuts or taxes. There are things that we can just do better.
I'm here to let you know where I'm standing, what I'm seeing, and what my position is. I'm never going to be afraid to address my constituents on any... This was a tough vote. You know, dealing with a lot of economists on a national level, certainly seeing that our troops may not get funded, or, you know, there was a lot at stake here. But no matter how tough the vote is, no matter what the issue is, I'm going to come back here, I'm going to face you. I want to let you know what I'm seeing. I want to let you know what the different variables are, and I want to give you real-world information. There's a lot that's out there in the media, you know, I agree that corporations should pay the fair share, absolutely. And when I hear that, you know, there are some corporations that aren't, yeah, I think it frustrates all of us. But before I go making an arbitrary decision based on something I've read in the media, I want to get the facts. I owe that to you, to make sure that we're making informed decisions and that I can always stand strong and come here and explain to you why I voted a certain way. But I think that corporations have to pay the fair share. I know that I'm a business owner, and I pay my fair share, I think that we all should. As far as other countries paying their fair share on environmental cleanup, I don't know how we dictate that policy to them. I do know that on issues where, you know, we're going to export all of our coal to China, who's going to burn it 10 times dirtier than what we would, we have, we should look at ourselves first. We should look at our own energy policy. I think there are some things that we are doing well to improve our water quality, our air quality, but I also know that there's duplication of regulation that drives our business down, and we've got to strike a balance, you know? I've got well water, my kids drink the water from my water table, I want to make sure that we've got, you know, the cleanest water in the world. But I also want to make sure that we don't have duplication of regulation that drives our farming out as well. And, you know, I do know that IHSS dollars are federally managed, I'm willing to sit down with you, and that goes for anybody else in here. You know, we're going to have town halls, I want to address every question at every town hall, I want to talk to you, I want to listen to you, but feel free to call our office at any time. You should know exactly how I vote on every issue. If there's something that concerns you, let us know. Let us know what we can work on, whether it's a veterans issue or, you know, a local issue that you need our involvement in. But I would ask you to reach out and put us to work, we work for you, whether you're Republican or Democrat, whether we agree on every issue or we only agree on a few issues. We're here to work for you, and you've got my commitment that not only will my staff always be available to answer any question you have, but I'm here to work for you. And that's an oath of office I take very serious. So, again, I want to thank you for all the questions, we had a huge crowd here tonight. We certainly had very differing views on a lot of different issues, but I want to thank you for being a civil crowd that allowed every question to get answered, that opportunity. I'm happy to answer your question too, I didn't see your hand, but let me come talk to you after this, but again, I know that a lot of you stayed very, very late, and we were committed to finishing at 8:00, and it's after 9:00, so thank you.
How do you feel about the question?
I think it was a great opportunity for just regular people to come in and ask questions and for me to listen, I thought it went very, very well.
All right, perfect, and any upcoming things, or let's see, somebody wants to find out more about you, what's your contact info? You got a website, stuff like that?
Yeah, I would ask them to come either to our Modesto office or look us up on jeff.denham@house.gov.